Okay. Let's mute everybody. Thank you for joining in. Yeah, Michigan, quite a few folks joining in. So I'm going to every so that we can get our conversation started. Mute all. Okay, so we need to be, even you unmute yourself. Everybody else is on mute. And we're just about ready, we are streaming live on, on Facebook. Let's see, are we live yet? Yes, we have gone live on Facebook. All right, here we go. Let's do this. Why is it in this mode? Speaker view. Let's do the speaker view. All right, we cut this. Okay. We are two minutes late, but delighted to have you all join us for our Wednesday podcast. We are talking small business. The stimulus package has been the talk for the last couple of weeks and it's finally coming together. So this week, I believe the experts have analyzed the stimulus package. So we are essentially going to drill down the, the impacts of the stimulus package upon, somebody's calling me. Let me reject that. And we are talking about the impact of the stimulus package upon businesses, small businesses, upon medium businesses, upon the enterprises and also the impacts with the wage earners, people from Silicon Valley, people who work for small businesses. So all those kind of details would be drilled down with a special guest that we have today, Kislay Banka from the, from the Chuk firm. And he's got a presentation lined up. And initially what we'll do is we'll, we'll run through the deck and then we'll have plenty of opportunities to ask questions. So that's our agenda today. So we have been running this podcast for some time now. And we have been essentially talking about coronavirus and all the impacts with it. And we have met with quite a few very special folks from Silicon Valley. Yesterday, we had a team of geriatrics from Kaiser Permanente and also from Sutter Health. And we were actually talking about very specific healthcare related questions with coronavirus. And this is actually our fifth panel discussion, sorry, fifth town hall meeting, I should say. And we all have been hunkered down the Bay Area. The, as you know, the shelter at home has been now extended to May 3rd. And what's happening is we are all discovering an opportunity, an opportunity to connect with our family members, an opportunity to connect with the fruits in our backyard, an opportunity to discover a new creativity that always was within us. You know, it's a great opportunity for us, you know, adversity creates opportunities in our lives. So let's make the best use of it. And the data is looking pretty stark. I mean, the US yesterday, we had 187,000 cases and 3867 deaths. And so this number is growing unfortunately. And everybody is cautiously optimist, optimistic that the Bay Area's early moves for doing the shelter in home will sort of prevent this from spiking and we are still waiting for the dip in that bell curve. And hopefully soon, anytime we should see that dip. And, and that would sort of tell us that we are on track to getting this in control. And this needs to happen in every state of our country and also every country globally because this is the pandemic. And it doesn't mean that it's only Santa Clara County that comes to grips with it. You know, everybody needs to be, be equal participants with this. But something very interesting is happening while we are coming to the grips with the shelter in place, the social distancing, the new norms, no more handshakes. We are all doing this in this day and age, which is pretty amazing. And the masks have actually become a fashion statement. And it is not disrespectful to meet your neighbors while you're jogging or walking and to not stand and talk to them. And so it's a new world. In fact, funny videos have been created to show how people are avoiding each other. Social media is a buzz that is anxiety, but creativity too. And we are seeing many examples of how everybody's pivoting, pivoting to survive in this new world. And setting, we are constantly evolving. I mean, that's the nature of Silicon Valley innovation. We are constantly shifting. But this is where the true innovation is happening in this new world, in this new reality of coronavirus. How exactly are we going to deal with this? And so that's the reason why we have the experts. So what I would like to do is, I would like to introduce Kislay Banka from the Chuk firm. And Kislay, if you don't mind talking a little bit about yourself and your background, and I'll be happy to run your deck soon as you're ready. So Kislay, on to you. Thank you so much for joining and really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. My name is Kislay Banga. I'm a CPA and partner with Tachuk Firm. I've been working with the firm for last 16 years almost. And Rishi called me an hour back and he wanted me to run a few slides and discuss about some of the stimulus package. And I said, yeah, why not? Anytime, I'm ready to help the community. So Rishi, I can jump on the slide. So first I'll discuss few slides on the taxes. What are the changes in the taxes and credits available? And then later part, I'll discuss about the couple of loans they are available to the small businesses.
Yes, I want to your cover, opening slide. So shall we move to the next slide?
Correct, yes, yes, sure, Rishi.
Sure, okay, here we are.
In fact, you know, we can move one more slide.
Okay, super.
So IRS original deadline was April 15, which IRS has extended by three months. So now all business tax returns and individual tax returns are due by July 15. The individual and businesses, they can also defer their tax liability until July 15 without incurring further interest and penalties. Certain companies who are multi-state filers and they are filing in the multiple states, they have to be a little careful and need to make sure that all the states where they are filing, they have also extended due dates. If you have already scheduled certain payments, that can be changed. And if you have to make certain contribution for your retirement, for example, say IRA or defined benefit plan, you can defer those for future debts as well. Next slide, Rishi.
Here we go, next slide.
So again, here, there are a few questions they were asked earlier. And yes, certainly you can file your extension by July 15. And the question was asked about HSA and IRA. Yes, those extensions are also applicable. We can move another slide, Rishi. Actually, this is, this was repetitive. Certain tax credits are available under a couple of laws. One was FFCRA. Under FFCRA, if your employee is sick, you can get a payroll tax credit up to 100% for the sick wages paid. And this will be limited to 10 days for, per employee. Credit can be claimed on employee's share of social security taxes, which is 6.2%. And if the credit is more than payroll taxes, then excess is refundable to the employer. This is important. Many times the credits are not refundable. They can be adjusted against your tax liability. But this particular credit will be refundable to you if it is more than tax liability. And the tax credit is also applicable to the individual and self-employed people. And, and for them, it can be refunded on their, their income tax return. So this FFCRA credit is also available for FMLA leave and, but the limit for that is $10,000 per employee. In addition, businesses, particularly the startups, if they are spending money on the R and D expenses, they can claim R and D tax credit and up to $250,000 worth of their R and D credit can be claimed against payroll tax liability. And they don't have to pay payroll taxes for that. Next. Certain criteria who is eligible for payroll tax credit. Again, many of the provisions of the CARES Act are applicable to the small employers. And small employers are defined as a, with the employee count of 500, 100 or less. The individuals can claim the credit on their income tax. We discussed it earlier. And if the employee is, is sick and is working from home, then the payroll tax credit will not be applicable. If businesses are going to apply for PPP plan, which is paycheck protection program, they may not be able to claim some of these credits. We will discuss more about PPP plan later in a couple of slides.
Next slide.
Actually, we can go further down.
Okay, sure.
Actually, one more down. We'll discuss more on the paycheck protection plan. This is part of the CARES Act. Certain question comes in the mind if your, your business is eligible. So any businesses with the employee count of less than 500, they are eligible. Independent contractors, self-employed individuals are eligible. The condition is that business should be in operation on 15th February 2020 and had employees for whom the borrower paid salary and payroll taxes or, or they have paid to paid contractor and, and reported it on 1099 miscellaneous form. What went, what lenders are going to look for? Lender will also ask for the good faith certification that current economic condition and uncertainty make the loan request necessary to support ongoing, going operation. The borrower will use the loan proceed to retain workers and maintain payroll. Mortgage, lease and utility payment. Borrower doesn't have an application pending for a loan duplicative of the purpose and amount applied for here. This is particularly important, we'll discuss more. From February 15 to December 31st, the borrower has not received any loan duplicative for the purpose and amount applied for here. What lenders are not looking for? The borrower sought and was unable to obtain credit elsewhere. So you don't have to prove that, okay, my, my application was rejected at Wells Fargo or certain other bank. A personal guarantee is not required for this loan. No collateral is required for this loan. So for the PPP loan, you don't have to provide any personal guarantee or collateral. The next question is very important, how much I can borrow? The loan can be up to 2.5x of the borrower's monthly payroll cost, not to exceed $10 million. The payroll cost include payroll taxes and benefit. And includes salary over 100K of individual employee. Many of my clients are asking whether they need to exclude all the employees who are getting $100,000 or more. That is not true. We can take only salary up to 100K. Any salary exceeding 100K, we have to eliminate for this, this calculation. And also it doesn't include any foreign wages. So if US company has a foreign subsidiary and, and they have a multiple employee and paying salary. So those salary will not be counted. No 1099, no third-party consulting will be counted for this calculation. Simple payroll cost plus, plus employer's share of payroll taxes plus medical and dental benefits will be counted for this purpose. Very important question, will this loan be forgiven? The borrower is eligible for loan forgiveness equal to the amount the borrower spent on the following item during eight-week period. Payroll cost, interest on mortgage, rent on leasing agreement, payment on utilities. The loan forgiveness cannot exceed the principal. So for example, if someone gets $1 million loan under this program, then within eight-week period, they have to spend the money in payroll cost, interest, rent, all these things that I just discussed.
I thought you, you were running out and you had watered it down.
Okay, let me just mute some, everybody, okay, I'm gonna mute everyone. So Kislay, if you can unmute yourself and please unmute yourself and start to continue, sorry about that.
Yes, so I just discussed about this, this loan can be forgiven. So this loan can be forgiven if they are used for certain items for eight-week period, which is payroll cost, interest, rent, utilities. And this loan forgiveness can be reduced if there are reduction in the payroll more than 25% or there are layoff or termination of the employees, then this loan will, the forgiveness amount will be reduced. So after the eight-week period is over, the forgiveness amount will be calculated. And the remaining amount, if that is not forgiven, will get converted into loan. And the remaining amount has to be payable back in two years with 0.5% interest. Many questions are asked.
I'm sorry. Hold on, I'm gonna mute everybody again. Mute. Okay, so Kislay, please continue, you can unmute yourself. Hi, Kislay.
Yes, yes, I'm back, yes.
Okay, good.
So you can go back to slide number nine.
Okay, is this the right slide?
Yeah, we can stay here, we can stay here. I'm about, about to complete PPP plan and then I'll discuss this SBA economic injury.
Okay, great.
Before PPP plan was rolled out, SBA came out with economic injury disaster loan. This is also called EIDL loan. The funding for this loan is only $10 billion. The funding for PPP loan is up to $350 billion. This loan, how can you use this loan and, and can you obtain this loan? This loan can be used for working capital. And to obtain this loan, you need to provide the credit and collateral requirement. The credit history has to be acceptable level to the SBA. And collateral is required for all EIDL loan over $250,000, $200,000. And if you don't have a collateral, you can provide personal guarantee for this loan. The loan is available up to $2 million and the payment with the interest of 3.75%. We will address any questions after I run a couple of more slides and then we'll address all the questions if any audience has any. There could be some loan eligibility restriction if the user had any non-compliance previously with SBA. They will not be, they will not be acceptable for, for the purpose of this loan. If someone is applying for this loan, SBA EIDL loan, they can get up to $10,000 advance. And, and SBA is claiming that within three days of application, that $10,000 will hit your bank account. And this $10,000 is not refundable irrespective of if this SBA loan is approved or not. You can go to next slide. Rishi, we can go to the next slide. Okay, yeah, this is good. There are some other program available at, at the local level, state level. There is a organization called Financial Development Corporation. They are partnering through local businesses and, and providing loans on liberal term. Their jump start loan program available, the jump loan, jump start loan program is intended to provide small businesses, technical assistance, training and financial literacy, et cetera, for the small loans. There are farm loans, loans available for the small farmers with up to 90% guarantee by the US Department of Agriculture. For the technology company, especially funded by the VC, there is a little bit of bad news. They may not be eligible for both, both of these loans. However, if the, if the company is funded by friends and family and, and small individual angel investors and, and the company has some safe loan and some other loan, they would be eligible to apply for these loans. Exim Assistance, the Export-Import Bank of the United States is coming to add all the financial institutions and exporters in the US that have been impacted by COVID-19 by announcing several relief provisions. Exim Bank is gonna work with customers who are facing shipment problem, payment difficulties, liquidity problem to help them overcome these disruptions and assure them of flexible arrangement. Next, I'll discuss. Yeah, Rishi, we can go to the next slide. Next, I'll quickly go through some other features of the CARES Act. The IRS is writing a rebate check to the individuals, $1,200 per individual and $500 per child. A family of four can expect the check of $3,400 in few weeks. This amount will phase out for someone who is making 75K or more for individual and 150K or more as a married filing jointly. For businesses, the net operating loss was suspended from 2019. Now businesses can carry back NOL for 2018 to 20 taxable year. So for example, if let's say you have a loss in the current year, but in the last couple of years, you had a profit and you have paid some taxes, you can amend your tax return for 2018, 19 and you can, you can claim some refund back from IRS. Certain, for certain small businesses, for example, restaurants, if they are doing qualified improvement, usually they were depreciable over the period of 15 year. Now that can be depreciated for, within, within the year of expenses. There are penalty-free withdrawals available for retirement fund up to $100,000. You can, you can withdraw from your retirement fund without paying any penalty. Usually the penalty is 10% by early withdrawal of these funds. For certain individuals who are above certain age, they, they have a requirement to get a minimum distribution from their retirement fund so that there is a temporary waiver of, of this RMB until 2020. Certain individuals or, and businesses who have to make a minimum contribution to their defined benefit plan, they can defer their defined benefit plan contribution until next year. Interest deduction. The, there was a limitation of direction and interest in 2019 by, by way of new changes in the tax law. And that interest direction was limited to 30% of the profit. Now that is increased to 50%. Employers can make certain contribution towards student loan for their employees and, and that can be deducted by the employer. If the loan was paid before January 1, 2021. There's certain acceleration of corporate credit is available for previously paid AMT taxes. So if your business has previously paid some AMT taxes, they can be claimed in the current year. Next slide, we can go to next slide. Quickly, some other features, independent contractor, this is a kind of rare instance where unemployment insurance would be extended to a contract worker, freelancers, Uber driver and other non-traditional worker who otherwise do not qualify for unemployment. Independent contractor also can apply for EIDL loan, which we just discussed earlier. The credit reporting, the act, act requires that lender that allow the struggling customer to defer a skip loan payment to report the borrower as a current on their payments, even if they are not. So a delayed payment will not negatively affect your credit report standing. The CARES Act also has a provision up to 150 to directly add the states and cities to distribute a collision size. Also $25 billion is allocated to public transport to make the revenue loss because of the reduced ridership. The states are advised, the, the government has advised the financial institutions to delay the mortgage and loan payment for a few months due to this pandemic. Rishi, my slides are over, I can take questions. Rishi, I think you are unmuted.
Okay, thank you so much, Kislay. You know, thank you for scampering the very last minute and putting these slides together. I really appreciate that. This has been a hot topic and we have had quite a few people who have joined in now. So let me just stop the screen share and let's take some questions. And I would love to see what questions we have. So let's go to the chat. Okay, so, so let's start from the top. Okay, so we have Vipul who has a question about IRA extensions. Vipul, are you still there? You might be unmuted, go ahead. Okay, so the question from Vipul was, do the IRA, IRA extensions also apply to solo 401K contributions for employers?
Yes, yes, they will be applicable as well until the taxes are filed.
Okay, so, so you know, I think, Kislay, I just want to provide you some context. Kislay is a principal at the Chuk firm, you know, he's very, very well informed with the current stimulus package, but also other tax questions. You know, he is, he's the leader from the Chuk firm. And so you, you, he, he'll be happy to answer any and all of your questions. So let's run through it. We still have plenty of time. We have 30 more minutes to run through our podcast. This is the daily podcast, Reality Check with Rishi, where we talk about specific topics. Monday is about politics. Tuesday is healthcare. Wednesday is small business. Thursday is tech. And Friday is the youth. So that's what we have been talking for the last few weeks. Let's go to Jonas Johnson, Johansson. Jonas, are you still there? Would you like to unmute yourself and ask your question? Okay, how about Jay Mehta? Okay, Jay Mehta has a question, payroll rent. Mr. Mehta, are you there? Okay, the question is payroll rent utility, we can use it for the same. And is it a cap of $10,000? Two years with 0.5% interest is a good deal is, is, is what he has put as a comment. So thoughts on that, Kislay?
Yes, so this is part of PPP plan. Under PPP plan, I just said how much you can get. So you can get average monthly payroll multiplied by 2.5x. And the, and the, in this payroll cost, you can include regular payroll plus payroll taxes and benefits. And this amount can be paid for payroll, rent, medical benefits, utilities, mortgage interest. And whatever the amount that was not used will, will get converted into loan. And, and you have to pay back in two year with 0.5% interest. Yes, it is definitely a good deal. So if the amount is forgiven, you don't have to pay back. If certain amounts are left, you can pay in two year with 0.5% interest.
Excellent. So as a follow-up to this podcast, we'll provide you the video link that will be posted on YouTube. And we will also provide you certain documents, a summary of what we just discussed today with clickable links that you can actually click through and follow up and read some of the details behind it. So a summary with lots of clickable links that will provide you deep insights. And we'll probably run a series of these over the next few weeks. So let's go, go back to Mr. Mehta who has a question. Anything you, you heard about taking a loan from 401K or IRA? Or I do not want to use this for my small business here. Mr. Mehta runs a small business and he doesn't want to incur the 10% IRS penalty. So Kislay, any comments on that?
Yes, as a part of CARES Act, you can withdraw up to $100,000. Pay 10% penalty, but that amount will be taxable as a regular tax. Generally, when you withdraw the money from retirement fund, it is not only subject to tax, but also subject to 10% penalty. So penalty part will be waived here.
But you are still liable for the taxes?
Of course.
Okay. Good. So okay, Vipul, can mortgage payments be delayed for all or is there an income limit?
And I think all these financial banks institutions, they have been instructed to delay the payment. It can be delayed for a few months for all.
Yes, yes, that's the, that's the latest that I'd heard. Okay, we have, okay, Mahmud Khan. Okay, we have, okay, Mahmud Khan is here. Mahmud, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Hi there, everyone. Rishi, thanks for taking this time to go through this daily. So my question is actually twofold. One is county tax, Santa Clara County tax, can they be delayed?
That is a county specific question. So I think I have not heard about it. I mean, the county, county has to provide some guidance. Probably they will publish something in few days.
So, so I would like to elaborate on that. This was a very frequent question that came to my email. And so I had reached out to Larry Stone's office to figure out if there's going to be delay. April 10th is the deadline and as far as what I've heard, there is currently no talk, no conversation to delay that April 10th payment. And the difference between the feds and the county is, you know, there are operational expenses that the county has to, has to address. And so that's the reason why it's difficult for them to waive these types of taxes.
Yeah.
Let's figure out if there is a possibility on that. It may very well happen because I can see our county supervisors, they have been very busy having meetings and they are constantly providing updates. And I'm staying in touch with their emails, with their updates to figure out, you know, what kind of insight we can provide back to our folks. So stay tuned is what I would say.
My second question is related to the loans for contractors. As a result of layoffs, you know, I run a job search group. A number of my attendees, they've been laid off and they want to start their own, be a self-employed contractor. Would they be able to get loans through this program?
They were working under, they were working under what capacity? Were they working as a 1099 contractor?
No, they were working as W2.
No, they cannot get the loan, but they can certainly apply for the unemployment insurance from the state. So right now the unemployment insurance is, is very good. Not only state is providing the regular unemployment benefit, but the federal is also adding up $600 per week. So roughly, you know, the, those people can get $4,000 from federal and state together.
Yeah, okay, that, that's what I understood. Okay, thanks very much.
So Kislay, did you touch upon the fact that, you know, I think there are companies that essentially can do, do a furlough of their employees for four months and essentially treated like a terminated, terminated employee. But then they continue the healthcare and they have the option to bring them back. Did you touch upon that or could you touch?
No, I did not, I did not. That's a, that's a employment related question, but I can answer that question. If the employees are for low and the employer is continuing their benefits, those employees can go to, go to state and claim the unemployment benefits while they are for load.
Yeah, so you, you have different state as well as federal options. And that should collectively provide you the opportunity to get through over the next few months. And I'm pretty sure you covered the, for, for larger enterprises, Kislay, did you cover the 7.6 to 5% employee portion of the payroll tax?
No, I can cover the, so the, the corporation who are more than 500 count. I mean, this rule is very tricky and, and this is coming from SBA regulations. So SBA regulation says affiliated party definition and based on affiliated party definition. For example, if you have a US corporation and you have a company in India with 500 people or more, you can argue to say that, okay, I have only 100 people in the US. But for based on SBA regulation, you are no longer a small business and you're both domestic and foreign affiliates will be counted for this purpose. And so many of these provisions, both of these loans, SBA loan and PPP loan are not available to you. And similar things are applied to the VC, VC funded firms. So what SBA says that these VCs, they have been investing in multiple companies. So we have to count the number of employees of all those companies. And that is why those VC funded firms are kind of not getting benefit of these two loans.
Correct, correct. So I, I just want to touch upon a couple of things. One is, and Kislay has likely covered these. But here, here are options and this is a quick summary. Here are options for companies with less than 500 employees. And here is option one, you could get a loan from SBA. And so apply for the COVID-19 economic disaster loan. And this is only a loan basically. So, so when, when does this apply? If you don't have payroll, for example, if you only have inventory cost, then you could essentially apply for this loan. And for nonprofits, it's 2.75% for 10 years and for, for profit, it's 3.75% for 10 years. Kislay, you want to add anything more to this?
No, so many times, you know, I'm getting a question, can we apply both the loans, EIDL and PPP? So law doesn't prohibit from applying you for both the loans. But PPP clearly says that you cannot have a multiple other application duplicative of the same purpose. So as long as your, as your purpose is different for both the loans for EIDL and PPP loan, you can apply for both. And it is also possible that EIDL loan can be converted into PPP in future. For certain people who do not have any employee or payroll cost, they will not get any benefit from PPP loan. But they can certainly file for EIDL loan and they can get the $10,000 advance from, from SBA for EIDL loan. And later on, if their application is denied by EIDL for certain reason, then this $10,000 is not refundable. You can enjoy the $10,000 given by EIDL.
So the PPE that Kislay is referencing, it's the payroll protection program. There is a total of 377 billion that has been allocated for it. And what we also hear is there is potential for more. If we exhaust the 377 billion, then there'll be potentially more funds. And the key difference between, between the SBA versus the PPE is the fact that with the PPE, you know, you could essentially a portion of it could be completely waived. So what does the PP include? Basically, you have to look at your payroll cost for the last 12 months plus your rent, mortgage, utilities, interest. All needs to be filled out. Then where do you fill it? You go to your bank. So every, your bank has been authorized to accept these types of, they have the application. You can go fill it out and they will give you the, the way they calculate is once you are approved, it's a monthly average times 2.5. And but a portion of this loan will, can be forgiven. And so those are the nuances, there are a lot more details to, to this. And if a loan is not forgiven, then you have 10 years and the interest rate is only 0.5%. And that's the PPE program. Now, Kislay, you want to add anything more to this?
Yeah, yeah, actually it's not 10 years, it's two year. Earlier guidelines said, you know, it is 10 year, but the new guideline and new form, I mean, they are saying it is it will be forgiven, only a small amount possibly could be refundable.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for correcting me on that.
Another thing, Rishi, I, I would like to say that the economic injury disaster loan, EIDL loan, you have to do directly with the SBA. There is a SBA website and, and this application can be done within 15, 20 minutes. But for the PPP loan, you have to contact your bank and the bank should be ready with the application in next couple of days.
Yes, so, so these things are, it's still in the very early stages. So I guess a lot of folks are not ready with all the information. And what we'll try to do is we'll provide you a single document that will have lots of this content for you to look at, review it. And hopefully we would have addressed a lot of your pending questions in that particular documents. So that is currently in the works, my team is working on it. And along with the help of folks like Kislay. So let's go to Jackie. Jackie, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
Yes, so I, as stated in the chat, I mean, we, my fam, my small family, my daughter and myself, both have been let go of our positions. I, I was working as a contractor. I ran a couple Airbnbs and they have shut down. And then I had just recently got another contracted position. And I've been laid off from that too. But because it was, I had only went to one day of paid training. I don't know what to do from there because usually unemployment, you have to have a history of the last job, right? And then with my daughter as well, they laid her off and stated that she is not going to even get pay for the time that she worked. So she doesn't even have a pay stub. And I've reached out to them and let them know that we're going to reach out to the labor board because I, I mean, I don't know what else to do for her.
Sorry to hear, this is very unfortunate, but you can connect with EDD and Employment Development Department. And part of the CARES Act says that certain people who are not on W2 and they were self-employed or individual or not, they can also apply for the unemployment benefits. So you should get in touch with EDD. I'm, I'm sure there will be certain things for you there.
Okay, even for contracted employees?
That is correct, yeah, even for the contracted employees, yeah.
Okay, I thought I heard you say earlier that contracted employees aren't eligible for the unemployment benefits.
No, they are eligible.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Rishi, you are unmuted.
Kislay, do you have a slide with your contact information that you could share later at the end of the presentation so that folks can reach out to you directly? Let's go to Christie Johnson. Christie, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Great, go ahead.
Yeah, so I have, I'm a sole proprietor. I'm the only person at my business. And so my business is closed now due to the shelter in place. And it sounds like maybe is the EIDL, the program that I'd be looking at to cover expenses?
Employee, were you paying any payroll on W2s?
Um, so no payroll. It was just a sole proprietor and so just the, the profit would be my, my payments.
Oh, I see. You can do, you can definitely do EIDL and, and get $10,000 advance from EIDL. And hopefully they can approve some, some loan.
And the loan amount would just cover expenses or does, and then the unemployment would be for the, for the compensation?
You can see, the CARES Act says that individual contractors, self-employed people, they can file for the unemployment benefits.
Okay.
So I don't know how it will be rolled out by EDD, but you can certainly get in touch with EDD and, and see what are the procedures.
Okay, and, and just to be clear, was the EIDL, was that program a portion where the loans will be forgiven or that one does not have the forgiveness?
That, there is a possibility that first $10,000 emergency advance will be forgiven.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let's go to Mittal, Mittal, you're still there? Okay. Mr. Mehta, you're still there? You have one more question, I can see. So the question is, can I do EIDL and PPP separately for, for, he's, he's running two businesses? And he wants to see if I can do both EIDL and PPP separately for both businesses?
You can certainly do, but end of the day, you will not be able to get the benefit from both. You have to choose one over other in coming days. But if you want to apply for both, you can apply for both.
Yeah, if, if both get approved, then it's a either or, he's got to pick one of those.
That is correct. And if you get $10,000 advance from EIDL, that amount will be adjusted in PPL forgiveness amount in future.
So Kislay, this is all like recent stuff and I'm very impressed that you are on top of it. So good, good job. Let's go to Saravan Nan.
Rishi, this is me, Tool Shark, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. So I run a small tech firm, we are not funded, we are, we are bootstrap company. Does EIDL or PPP cover WT employees as well as contractors and making payments to that as part of, you know, or is it considered payroll and can you, can that be part of the, you know, can that be part of PPP?
Yes, Mittal, the PPP plan is for the payroll. If you have a contractors or 1099, they will not be part of this calculation. But if you are people on W2, you can certainly do the calculation for loan for PPP plan. And EIDL is not based on the payroll. EIDL is, is a injury disaster loan. And you can apply for it depending upon the strength of your business and your capability to pay back. The, the loan amount will be approved.
Okay, so any of the contractors or consultants that you have, that would not be part of or cannot be part of payroll or PPP, but can be part of the idea?
Sorry, Mittal, I think your first part I could not hear properly. Can you repeat your question?
What I was saying was that you, if I understand you correctly, it's part of PPP, only W2s are considered as a payroll.
That is correct, yes.
But as far as your contractors or consultants that you're paying what 1099, it cannot be considered and could potentially be considered part of the idea.
For PPP, certainly they will not be considered. For EIDL, there is no such calculation that is based on payroll or 1099. The EIDL will be simply based on your strength of your business, just like you go to any normal bank for the loan. You would apply the similar thing with the SBA and depending upon your strength of the business, your loan will be decided by SBA. But certainly the loan amount will be liberal, the rate is liberal, the term is liberal. So certainly much better option than going to the bank.
Okay, and you said PPP will be done by your banks in couple of days.
Correct, so SBA, EIDL loan is done by SBA directly, but PPP will be done by your bank, your bank. You have to work with your bank and bank will work with SBA to get your loan done.
Got it. And as far as EIDL, any kind of guidelines by when they would be start looking at it, giving out loans and so forth? I know you mentioned $10,000 in three days.
Yeah, $10,000 in three days, but you can apply the loan and the guideline says that within seven to 10 days, a loan officer will be assigned. Once you file the loan on EIDL and then loan officer will work with you for more information, more details like your personal information, tax returns and things like that. And they will take another couple of weeks and hopefully within five weeks, this would be deciding on the loan.
Okay, and you'll have to give personal guarantee or some kind of collateral to back it up in that sense.
If the amount is less than $200,000, you don't have to give any collateral or personal, personal guarantee. But if the loan amount you are expecting more than $200,000, then yes.
Got it, got it, awesome. Well, thank you so much, this was really helpful.
Good, let's go to the next one. Saravan Nan, are you still around?
Hi, Rishi, yes, I'm, I'm Saravanan. Thank you for taking my question. My question is, say for the PPP, is it available only for the employees that who were hired before this event, this act? Or, or if I plan to hire more employees now, does the PPP cover their payroll as well?
Unfortunately, the calculation, how much you can get is based on your average 12 month salary, monthly salary, multiplied by 2.5X. But you can certainly use the money in the future higher, I mean, once you get the money.
Okay, okay.
So it's more like a backward looking story, right? It's not a forward looking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Russell. And we have only a few more questions. We are getting to 7:30 in another 10 minutes. And Kislay, please have a slide with your contact information that you can share with the folks. So let's go to Russell. Russell, you still around?
Yeah, hi, thank you for having us podcast. I work for a company with under 500 employees of which 300 or so were furloughed and there was another 100 that were kept on, but with a reduced salary of approximately 25%. Are those people that are still working with a reduced salary eligible for unemployment benefits?
Very good question, but I think certainly something should be available with EDD. Unfortunately, I don't have the exact answer. But 300 odd people who are for load, they can certainly go to EDD and apply for unemployment benefits. But the people who are reduced salary to 25%, they have to check with EDD. I don't have the answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie, you had a question about your daughter, but I think it was addressed earlier, right? In your previous question, correct? Let's go to Binder, Binder.
It's, it is Boris Yenler. Hi, hi. So my question is about the grant. Could, could somebody explain to me what grant is about and what's, what is this?
The basic idea of federal this stimulus package is that the employment should continue, payroll should continue and to, to continue those payroll, the federal is giving loan assistance and certain loan. Loan assistance and certain loan. And if you continue the the employment of your employees, then certain loan given to you will be waived. So this is about mostly that for individual people, if they lost their job or therefore load. They can go to unemployment benefit. And the the benefits are much more liberal at this time. Usually it is only state. But now federal is also adding up $600 per week for the unemployment benefits for next four months.
So essentially, and how can I apply for the grant?
Do you have any business going on?
I do. Yeah, yes, I am.
And you have employees in the business?
Yeah, I have license, everything. I am fully licensed, etc.
Do you have employees in the business, Boris?
I'm sorry?
Do you have? Do you have employees in the business? That was the question.
And I have contractors.
So if you have a contractor, you will not be eligible for PPP loan. But you can certainly go for EIDL loan, which is Economic Injury Disaster Loan. And $10,000 certainly you will get. But based on the strength of your business, it is possible that you get more loan and and the terms of the loans are very liberal. 3.75% 30 year payment.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
So that was the end of the questions. I would love to make this an open forum. Anybody can unmute yourself and ask questions? Who wants to go first?
I have a question. Do you hear me?
Yes, yes, we we can.
Yeah, on on the PP, on the PPE, is it better to go to your own bank? Or? There are other banks which are more favorable.
99% of the banks are gonna offer this plan. And it is, I will definitely suggest to go with your own bank. Because the banks are banks are over going to be overwhelmed with the approach. And if you go with some other bank who is not you are not banking with, it's going to take much longer time.
Okay, Wipal, I unmuted you. So please unmute yourself. Okay, so who, sorry, yeah, Kissley, I.
Yes, Rishi, I was saying that, you know, you can go to any bank and it is definitely recommended to go to your existing banking relation. Otherwise, if you go to a new bank, you have to first open a bank account and then. Those setups will take few days and then only you can apply for this PPP loan. And those banks are going to be very, very busy next few days and they will not entertain you probably.
Good. Makes sense. Makes sense.
Rishi, question?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Can can if you're paying yourself as part of payroll? Can that be considered as part of the overall payroll and whatever? Okay.
Yes, but only up to 100K per year.
Oh, if you're paying yourself only 100K per year is considered?
Yeah, yourself or your employees, the payroll limit for 100K per year per person.
Okay, got it. All right. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So any amount over that you have to exclude?
That is correct. Any amount exceeding 100K, you have to exclude.
You have to exclude. Okay. And when you try to offset this loan? You know, the time period starts when you actually get the loan or is there a defined time period?
It's a it's a it's a eight week period. I think it will start after you get the loan.
After you get the loan. Okay. So so if you get the loan, let's say April 15th or whatever, right? So the clock will start from April 15 till two months, eight weeks.
Correct. I mean, I have to confirm again. Is it going to be April 15 or maybe May 1? But it's going to be eight week period roughly around the same timeframe.
I see. And you had mentioned earlier, right? Other than payroll, right? When you apply for the loan, you can also include. Some 1099 contractors which you may be paying, right? As part of, you know, when you hired them for some services, right?
No, 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 you cannot include because think about it, those self-employed people are they are gonna apply for these loans themselves. Because they are also eligible for this. So you cannot include them. You can only include W twos.
Okay, only W twos. So and even in the offsetting, you cannot include the 1099 contract.
That is correct, yeah.
Only the only W twos. I see.
I had a question about real estate. You got a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. And the question was, we're kind of in the middle of a remodel. And in the city that we were working in shut down all construction, everything. So we have a couple vacant units. We still have rent, taxes, insurance, everything else. But no source of income or ability to rent them out. I'm curious what program you think would be best there?
There is nothing on the CARE Sact for answering your question. The CARE Sact is more trying to address the the employment related issues in the US. So they want to make sure if the employees are there, they have a job to work for next two months. Hopefully, and for that, they are providing many assistance.
Well, okay, thank you.
Next question?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so if I am a part of an LLC, I have a 1099 independent contractor. So can I apply for for EIDL through both of them?
Yes, you can apply. You can apply for both of them, but you will get benefit end of the day only from one. If you are a self self-employed person, based maybe you can based on your schedule, see what is the net profit. Based on the net profit, you can apply for PPP loan. But if the net profit is very less or maybe it is doing loss, probably your better bet is to go for EIDL. At least you can get 7, $10,000 advance from there and you don't have to refund.
Okay, no, but I can apply for EIDL both from an LLC or a tenant at the same time?
If you have a two separate businesses and you're filing the tax returns separately for those two things, then then you can definitely try for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We're just about two minutes away from 7:30. I really appreciate all of you joining in. And also Kissley, last minute, we put this together and we had a pretty decent turnout. And we couldn't quite do the outreach as we intended to because this was a last minute thing. But we'll run this again next Wednesday. And hope to have some of you back to talk a little bit more. And we should have some more data that we can do some more drill down. And Kissley and his team will hopefully be able to join in. We haven't talked about it yet. But on the slide that you can see, hopefully all of you can see the slide. That's Kissley's contact information. His email address is a little bit below the business card that you see on top. And you can also send your questions over to Kissley. And so that's all I had. I really appreciate you all joining in. So let's do it again next Wednesday, 6:30 PM. It'll be the same call in number, the same link, the same Zoom link. And so let's do it again one more time next Wednesday. Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Rishi, for inviting.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy.
Bye, thanks.